Yeah, we're reconvening at...
8:13.
8:13. And we have a sign permit, poignant sign, CVS Pharmacy, 100 North Main Street. Hello?
Would you like me to sit or would you like...
Um, sure, you could sit and I guess that's a microphone, so if you could kind of speak in near that, I guess we'll be okay. Okay.
Hey, I think you all have...
Give us your just name?
My name is Carol Bugbee.
Okay.
We're decided 40 Marshfield Circle, BC, in which, yes.
Okay. And so what are we doing here?
Well, about three years ago, CBS decided to stop selling cigarettes. And they got such a big boost from that, that they started to try to emphasize help. So now their new logo has a heart in it. And it's the same square footage or less than the other signs in the package. It's actually, the total is a little bit less. And they're halo-lit letters, which are kind of nicer than the others. The halo, it throws a shadow, a white shadow behind the letters, whereas these letters that were first installed were face-lit letters, in bright red. So they felt that it would be better for in this community to tone it down a little. It was the first time I've ever... But it's true. And so that's what we're proposing, is to keep the square footage the same and put up the little heart logo with all the signs.
Okay. So you say that the old ones were...
Faceless.
Which meant that they were lit by lights that were on the outside?
Yes.
Shining on them?
You know, no. The neon inside of the letter would be a color neon, and then the faces would be the red, if the neon was red, it was red. But when you drove down the street, you saw each letter light up.
Okay.
And then, you know, it's kind of... They felt it was kind of too much for that site.
And so now you're going to not have that, they're not going to be lit up?
We're going to have halo-lit letters. And when, if you, if you, I don't know if you had any in town, I'm not definitely in town, but face doesn't light up. The back of the letter is missing. It's actually a clear plexiglass. And when the light was on, the light comes out the back of the letter, and the letters offset five inches from the building. So you have this nice kind of little halo effect. And it's easy to read the letters, but it's not overwhelming.
Hmm. Yeah, I don't think I've ever seen that. And I go out and buy the CVS Pharmacy, I can't even remember what the letters look like originally, or what they look like now. I've gone by there probably a couple million times. So this is all within our bylaws? We can do this?
Mr. Chairman, this is consistent with the bylaws. The bylaws, though, also require that any change to a sign, an applicant would have to come before the board for approval. Some other communities would probably allow for this by right, but in our community, we like to review all of the sign changes.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other board members have any questions?
I think my concern, which you said, was that when you look at the old signage and the proposed, it looks like the proposed one is much brighter. It might just be the way that you put the pictures.
Oh, it's...
So my question was, is it going to be significantly brighter? But you said it's the opposite.
No, it's the opposite.
Okay.
It just is the shadow effect. I've seen some in Plymouth, in the, where BJ's is and down there, they have a lot of halo lighting. And it looks nice, it's subdued, so...
So this isn't a reflect, because, I mean, you can see in that picture, it's a lot brighter than the current.
Where are you?
If you, like, if you look at all of them, that clearly looks a lot brighter than that. So that's...
And I also, the camera is a little bit closer on that one, I think.
Okay, so it's not going to be much brighter?
No, it's going to be less bright.
Okay. Sure. And then the question I had, which is probably not for you, I just, on the actual application, when it says business address, it's the Woodsocket Rhode Island address, should that be the address of the business actually in Carver? Or is that a...
That's maybe an interpretation of how to fill it out, but I do know that Woodsocket Rhode Island is a corporate headquarters. Ms. Bugbee, would you mind telling the board or public record the address of this particular location?
This particular location is 100D North Main Street.
I just didn't know if that had to be the...
Any other questions? Have any questions, Will?
No, sir.
All right.
Make a motion to approve the new lighting for CBS and the new signage. Were the electrical permit and building permit required?
Second that.
So the electrical permit and building permit.
Jan, is that the original?
No, this is my copy.
All right, now I have it in.
I'm just making notes.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
All right, next we have Peter Georgietis. I don't know if I pronounced that correctly. Cedar Springs Plaza, 71 Main Street. And this is also for a sign permit. Anybody here for that? Oh, is that the one where we met the lady in the hall?
She was upstairs before our meeting.
Okay. And so, when you're... When you're ready, Stephen, if you could tell us what she's going to do?
Sure, this is actually a, this is just a reinstall of what was there. I think I recall her mentioning that the colors had changed in one place. It's not clear to me where that is, not having a visual of the old sign. But they are simply restoring what was knocked down in the series of storms we had in March, I believe.
Stephen, this, through you, Mr. Chair, this meets all the requirements, and what's the distance away from the roadway? Do we know what that distance is?
That, Mr. Sinclair, is unclear to me.
Well, they are putting the, yeah, they are putting the sign where the old sign was, so...
Yeah.
But it looks, yeah, I mean, it's very close to the road, yeah.
My concern, Mr. Chair, is just the visual, up and down 40, yeah, 58, just because there's two entrances and exits, and with the new development going next door with, excuse me, the condominium complex, and the traffic there, also with people coming in and out of Chance Court. I just want to make sure the visual aspect is good, and we can condition that.
Mr. Chair, if it's acceptable to you and the rest of the board, that's fairly consistent with actually how we handled one of the last sign permits, as you may recall, on, I think it's the corner of Lilian and Main.
Okay.
Jesse Boyle from the fire department, I met on site with the applicant, and we were able to ascertain that it was a safe distance from the road.
Okay, so if we could do that, then?
So, apologies, Mr. Chair, just wanted to be clear. It's, the board will be moving to approve with conditions that staff and public safety visit the site?
Yes. And that will need a building permit, I believe, too.
That's correct.
Is there any lighting proposed? I don't think there ever was any lighting.
I don't think there is.
I make a motion to approve the sign for 71 Main Street, Calvo, with the following conditions: building permit required and public safety to determine the visual aspect and the location where it's to be installed.
I'll second that.
So you have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. So next we have Form B. RBPPLC, Spring Street Innovation District, SLT Construction. Are we going to be able to pick up the sound for that?
I'm going to, I'm going to roll the mic.
Okay. Thank you. I don't want to be able to hear me, though.
Oh, it'll hear you.
All right, good evening.
Good evening. How are you? I'm Brad McKenzie, McKenzie Engineering Group, representing RBPPLC. Peter Opeczinski, who you're all familiar with, he was here two weeks ago, I think, on June 12th, for a brief discussion about the project. That's actually the day that we filed the Form B for the town clerk and planning board. And Stan Slapway is here from Mass, Mass DOT. You might be aware that Mass DOT still owns the property, Mr. Opeczinski and his...
I'm going to check it.
Mr. Opeczinski and his entity have an option to purchase the property, appendix and permitting through the state. And the project, as you may know, involves a industrial, call it light industrial subdivision of three lots. It's about 20 acres in Carver, about 23 and 1/2 in Plinkton. And the property is bounded, as you know, by State Highway Route 44 to the north, Spring Street to the southwest, Ricketts Pond to the east, and some undeveloped property to the north in Plinkton. There are some wetland resources on the site. We're going to be filing with the Conservation Commission this week to confirm the limits of those resources through a hand-rat filing, abbreviated notice of resource area delineation, and undulating topography throughout the site, most of its slopes towards Ricketts Pond. And the property in Carver is located within the Spring Street Innovation District, and the proposed lots will meet the zoning dimensional requirements in that district, 60,000 square feet, 175 feet of frontage. The road is about 1,120 feet in length, and meets the dimensional requirements in the subdivision rules and regulations. We are asking for a waiver, and roadway length, your requirement is 600 feet. The, at some point, what we plan to intend on doing is, once we get to a certain point with the board, within the statutory 45-day period, we'd like to move on to a Form C application, and that will obviously provide a greater level of detail, drainage calculations, and some more definitive drainage design. The plan that you see on, the information you see on our grading and drainage plan sheets five and six, provide some grading and some, the location of some stormwater management features, but they're preliminary in nature. We feel that they're going to be adequate, but they haven't been confirmed by doing the full hydrologic analysis, the pre- and post-development analysis. In the state regulations, the deep, these stormwater management regulations, the Earl Planning Board's rules and regulations require that we mitigate the increase in peak rates of runoff. So we feel that that design, this design, will achieve that. But again, we have more work, more work to do, more detailed engineering plans to prepare construction details and so forth, that we intend on beginning over the next few weeks. The project will require a filing under the MEPA regulations, and in connection with the purchase, Mass DOT requires that the property undergo an archaeological evaluation. That study's been conducted. The site has no significant historical or archaeological resources, and we'll be filing under the MEPA regulations by the end of this week, and hope to get through that process within the next two months. There'll be, there'll be private septic systems for each building or a series of buildings here. We intend, obviously, there's no, there's no public water available on Spring Street, so there'll be private wells to serve the development. Underground utilities throughout the project, as required by your subdivision rules and regulations. There is a, there is a closed drainage system on Spring Street. At this point, we don't intend on connecting to it. We feel that the stormwater management features that we have on site will retain the stormwater, and fully meet the intent of the regulations. I think with that, we'll turn it over to the board, any questions? I'm not sure if Peter would like to say anything, or Stan would like to say anything.
Anybody on the board have any questions?
I'd like to have from Stan from the state, and Peter if he has a minute.
Stan Slapway, Mass DOT, Office of Real Estate and Asset Development. Many of the members would know, we worked with a previous planner to help develop some guidelines, design guidelines, and to rezone this land from single-family residential to the Spring Street Innovation District. And we kind of had an idea as a joint partnership. This was the kind of development each of us would like to see, and we were very supportive of that rezoning that come through. We put this up to bid last year. There were multiple bids, and we're all fortunate that a well-respected developer from the local community was the designated developer on this project. We worked diligently through the process as owner to try and get them to this point and beyond, so that we can transact this land once the MEPA process is completed. That doesn't stop yard review of this. There's much more to go after that. But this is a good project from our standpoint, hopefully from the town's standpoint, that's right up where you were thinking. Myself, I've been working on this for five years. Truth be told, when we made the acquisitions, it's been almost 30 years that I've been working on it. So keeping this in mind, that when we did the Route 44 project, that at some point, we would be back before the town, trying to return this excess land to full utility for property taxes for the town. That's been our goal from the start. Took us a while to get there, but we're here. And we're very supportive of the project here. I hope the board would also be supportive. I'm going to ask you if you had any questions of us.
Not at this time for me, Mr. Chair. I think that at our last meeting, when Mr., when Peter presented just an informal discussion about this, being on the Industrial Development Committee and on the BDC prior to this land being taken, and then when it was taken, and working towards the rezoning and bringing it in front of this board and the community, this is exactly what we were hoping that would come to fruition. Again, I can't express for myself personally how happy I am to see that a local property owner, developer with, who's been known to develop with the highest quality of developments and is conscientious to this community, was the one who got the nod. And I'm happy to see that Peter's here, and his brother and his firm, they're a quality developer. I know that you guys have done a wonderful job. What you presented to this, to us initially, Peter, at our last meeting, and tonight, I'm happy to see that you've invited your engineer to bring in a brief description. I look forward to moving on this and bringing great tax dollars, jobs, to our community. And I can't speak highly enough of, I can't wait to see this come to fruition. I know I have at least 10 years involved with renovating after the Route 44 and highway coming in and seeing this come to fruition. I remember when, we talked earlier, when the houses moved.
Yes.
So it's been a long time coming, so I'm excited to see this project in front of this board.
And it's going to provide a great opportunity as well, to have local businesses be able to expand within the community, and take some of those businesses, as was originally envisioned, here out of people's backyards and into a formal commercial setting that will allow them to expand and have the resources available to be able to do that, and in the way that the developer has envisioned this as well, be able to adjust space as needed, to be able to grow those businesses. Having an economic development background myself, that's vital for a community, to be able to grow jobs within, to have that kind of flexibility. And that's, that's what I believe you have been presenting here with this preliminary plan, so...
You bring a wonderful point, and then not to overspeak you, but just to the community in a whole. When we looked at the Plymouth Street with Marion Drive, which Peter and his brother developed, and also Commerce Way with Buzz Antiano, this is exactly what the community wanted, and they're full.
Full.
They're full, and you, and I know as a contractor, people are screaming for space. And the access to Route 44, Route 3, in 20, and 495 off of this interchange is huge. It's huge for a contractor, it's huge for a business, and it's perfect.
Great. Good luck with this project. Should anything crop up, your planner, Stephen and I have been in communication. He'll be able to forward that to me, and we look forward to coming back here sometime in the fall and turning some dirt.
Yeah. That'd be great.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, sir. As Brad and Stan had mentioned, we've designed these buildings so that they're about 7,500 square feet. So they, and they're going to be, not rented, but sold as condominium units. And we think our price point will be such that it'll be very enticing for local businesses to be able to get along, buy the unit, and then when it's time for them to retire, move on, they have some equity that they have in the units, and, you know, rather than just paying rent out of their pocket every month. So I think that makes, will make it a nice selling point. My point of life, I don't care to be a landlord, so it's enticing to me, and so I think it's going to be a good feature for the property. These are pretty much the same plans that I bought in a couple of weeks ago on the 12th. Brad hit on any of the, most of the highlights of the site. You know, I think we're at nine buildings right now. We do have some self-storage units up in here that I mentioned last time, so we think the mix is quite suitable for the site. Location is great. Pretty much all I have. It's just, I think it's going to be great for the smaller businesses in town. And like Stan said, you can get them out of backyards and in the units like this, and we can make them anywhere from 1,500 square feet up to 7,500 square feet, depending on the need.
Question to you, Mr. Chair, to either Peter or the engineer. You had mentioned that you're going to be looking for some waivers. I know it's only a preliminary. I know that you just get inside, you don't have concrete engineering. I know the 600-foot roadway you're looking at. I'll suggest that you sit down with the chief, the deputy chief, Boyle, and talk to them about fire department. That's always been a stickler for us. Also, I know that you had mentioned at our last meeting that you've already applied to the earth-removable committee?
Yeah, just waiting for the, I think it's in the appeal period already.
Okay. And are you foreseeing anything, I know, once you start your engineering, you're going to find different waivers that you might need. Anything that you can give us a heads up on will be helpful.
Are you asking me if there's anything else?
I, I know you can't see in the future, but I just want to say, the sooner that we can see, see those, or those indications on your application, I'm sure you'll have them.
I think right now, another waiver that we're considering is the sidewalk waiver. Because this, we, I think that this falls into the minor roadway category, these subdivision regulations, one sidewalk is required. I think we're asking for a waiver to not build a sidewalk. So I don't contemplate any other waivers at this point.
Okay, it's just good to know as we get ready for this to come.
Mr. Chair?
Mm-hmm.
We did receive from the applicant a RNI deposit, and our engineers, Fussin' O'Neil, do have these plans. I was working with Brad on Friday, I think it was, right, Brad? And we were able to get them to Fussin' O'Neil for review. So my expectation is that, when I circle back to Fussin' O'Neil, we'll convene the internal technical review committee, and by the time the applicant's, of course, ready to proceed with the Form C, we'll be prepared to provide some greater insight to, and we all know how good Fussin' O'Neil is, some greater insight to the merits of the project.
Okay. Could I ask if we could get them electronically, too? It'd be great to be able to see the plans as they develop electronically through you , our planner, just out to the board members, so we can look at it that way, and we don't have to keep printing numerous copies. I know I had, like, stacks from Commerce Way.
Well, for your president's library.
And Marion Way.
I don't need print to submit to.
So I just think that, instead of just keep reprinting and stuff as there's changes and addendums come, I think electronic would be more helpful to me anyways.
Just because I'm busy. I will abstain from mentioning that it was Mr. Sinclair's email that rejected my electronic transmissions this Friday.
They did, I have no idea why.
Everyone else had them, but I will work with Mr. Sinclair offline to make sure I have a proper email address that can absorb the amount of megabytes necessary.
Dropbox.
I don't know what to say. Dropbox, absolutely.
Anything else? All right, I think that's it, and thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Did you guys want these back? Do you want them back? Do you want to be, you guys? I have it, I mean, do you want to do it?
No.
Nice to see you, man.
Good day.
Good day. Well, the next we had on the agenda was Jacob, was a decision for Jacob Brayley, 78 Rochester Road, Bed and Breakfast. And we already signed that decision. And I think we don't have that packet now.
No, Mr. Chair. It was through you for the public. We had voted on our last meeting to go through all the conditions and have that document ready and be signed. And we had authorized signing when it was complete.
We did that. Okay. So that takes care of that. Okay. Then we go on to other business, Planning Board Member Notes. Does anybody have anything to discuss tonight? I'm also. Have anything?
The only thing I have is I, again, would like to thank all the members who applied for the positions, not only the permanent position, but the alternate position. It was a due process, and I'd like to welcome you all. And you'll need to get sworn in, but we'll be busy. So I like that. It's a great process that we go through. So everybody's information was greatly appreciated. Other than that, I have to apologize to the board. For some reason, my email ain't working. So I wasn't getting anything. The plan is correct. For some reason, it's bouncing back. So I haven't figured that one out yet, but I'm really not that intelligent, so. Thank you.
And yeah, I'd like to say it was really encouraging to see three people step forward to apply for the planning board. And I'm very happy with our decisions tonight and look forward to working with you. So and hopefully, we won't have to have the problems that we had in the past with lack of... Without members being there and having to postpone meetings for weeks at a time. So that should take care of it. So and I think you'll enjoy working with the planning board. Must say, a good group of people.
It'll be nice to have a full board and alternate as well, which, like I said, we haven't had that in all the time I've been on the board.
Right. Right.
Do you miss the chair? I just want to thank the Board of Selectmen for their insight, their input. Their questions were greatly appreciated, and they were in-depth, helped the process. So it helped us in many things.
It was. They were very helpful.
Good leadership.
All right. Planning Director Notes.
Did I miss anything good?
You talked about it.
It's on camera. I'll find out. I'll know what you all said.
It's all on tape.
I first want to thank our returning member, Kevin Robinson, and certainly welcome Cara Dayhill to the planning board. No notes, aside from, of course, what you've already heard tonight. We have a lot of really great projects that are gearing up. And I personally, as an administrator, am excited to have a full board with alternate so that there are very few delays and we can move this ball forward. To mix analogies, my trains leave on time. So it's really important that I have such an engaged board. And I want to thank all of the sitting incumbent members as well, because you've been so wonderful to work with in my time here. Looking ahead, Mr. Chairman, at the agenda for the upcoming meeting on July 10th. As of now, my expectation is that we'll be beginning the public hearing process for Eadiville Parking Lot. It has already gone through the Conservation Commission approvals with some conditions. The reason, however, why it's been delayed on our end is because the planning board was subject to an election, and at that time, we had only four sitting members. The Mullen Rule didn't exist at that time. And so because we have a new member who wasn't able to participate in the public hearings previously, we had to begin the process over again.
Sorry, guys.
Democracy. So my recommendation to the planning board is this evening, as a matter of fairness, regardless of a corporate resident or otherwise, it is of no fault of the applicant that they had to withdraw and begin the application process over with conforming and butters. If this planning board is amenable, I'd be very glad to ask for you to waive the filing fee for Eadiville so that we can begin the public hearing process justly and properly with a full board with alternate beginning next planning meeting on the 10th at 7:00 PM.
I'll make said motion to waive that filing fee.
Second.
And a motion second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Chair and Board, there's one other matter that I'd like to bring to your attention. There's a property that was approved for subdivision back in 2008. It's known as the Witham Heights Definitive Subdivision Plan, revised on March 13, 2008. Having spoken with the original applicant, it became known to me that a hardship prevented the applicant from proceeding with the intended indefinite plans. Right around the time 2010 occurs, the state put through a special act that allowed for permits, known as the Permit Extension Act. It extended all of the... The purpose of this act is to promote job growth, long-term economic recovery. And the Permit Extension Act furthers this purpose by establishing an automatic four-year extension to certain permits and licenses concerning the use or development of real property. This was on the heels of the downturn, and it was a way for the state to keep certain projects that had some viability alive and gave the applicant an opportunity to continue to pursue that project during improved economic conditions and times. The applicant reached out to the staff and has expressed an interest in re-engaging and proceeding with what was approved. As a matter of fairness, given the nature of the state's intended act, I'm wondering if the board would also be amenable to waiving the filing fee for the Witham Estates subdivision to be reviewed by this board. But I think it would be important for us to still capture the review and inspection fee so that we can have Fussin' O'Neill review any of the revised submissions to the planning board ahead of board action.
Mr. Chair, I'll make said motion to waive that filing fee for a discussion.
Sure. I'll second.
Any further discussion?
Yes. That... I sat on that initial plan and everything. It was a long, in-depth development plan that was put in place. The planner is correct on the process that has taken place. And with the downturn in the economy, I know the Witham family because I've worked with them in the past. It's a great development. I look forward to seeing it again. I agree that a little review from Fussin' O'Neill is not a problem. I think it's good for us to look at it again and get this thing rolling again. Now that the economy's better, it's a good thing. So I'm looking forward to seeing it come to fruition.
All right. Do you have a motion and a second? Anyone else? Those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That was unanimous.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair and Board. As an economic development planner, I so appreciate that we are providing that level of customer service to very serious and well-regarded developers in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, minutes of June 12th, 2018.
Mr. Chair, in your packet, you have one copy of the minutes that was included. I handed out at the beginning of the meeting some revised minutes. Just a matter of clarification, having worked with Ms. Han, we were able to clarify one particular point from the last meeting. Substantively, the two copies are similar. It's just a matter of clarification.
So you're saying the second part that you gave to us was revised?
That's correct. On page 3, Mr. Sinclair, you'll see in the last paragraph, just above other business, I was advising the applicant for deadlines to return items to our office or submit items to our office, rather. We were just clarifying what was intended by my concluding comments that day.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of June 12th, 2018 as revised.
I'll second that.
A motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Our next meeting will be July 10th. And entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion for adjournment.
Second.
A motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
And good night, everyone.